Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Committee of the Hall for July 15, 2025. First up, we have rule call. Melissa.
Council President Cor.
Here.
Councilmember Boyce.
Yeah.
Councilmember Boyd.
Here.
Councilmember Fincher.
Councilmember Larmour.
Here.
Councilmember Michaux.
Here.
And Councilmember Trauner.
Thank you, Melissa. All right, next up, we have agenda approval. Any changes to the agenda? Dan, may I have a motion, please?
Show move.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. All right, next up, we have approval of minutes for June 30, 2025.
Show move, Madam President.
Second.
All right, motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. And then we have payment of bills. We receive those in our emails before the council meeting.
Show move.
All right.
And second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. All right, next up, we have approval of minutes for June 30, 2025.
Show move, Madam President.
Second.
All right, motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. And then we have payment of bills. We receive those in our emails before the council meeting.
Show move.
All right.
And second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. All right, next up, we have insurance renewal, and we have Tammy White, City Attorney. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Tammy White, City Attorney and now new risk manager. So part of my new duties is renewing the city's insurance policies. And so under our Kent City Code, we come to you twice a year. So at this time, on July 1st, is when we renew our insurance policy for property insurance, crime infidelity coverage, and drone liability coverage. And then in January, we renew the other policies we have, which are our general liability insurance protection coverage, excess workers' compensation coverage, and cyber liability. So today, I'm here to talk about these three coverages, which have already been renewed, but I'm coming to you to talk about any changes, which at the end of the day are none. So the good news is, is that everything is pretty much maintaining the status quo. And how do I get this one to advance here? Okay, so the good news is, we are actually reducing our premiums. So we've saved 7.75%, which comes to $86,000 over what we paid last year, but everything else remains the same. Our coverage is the same, our insurers are the same, and the terms of our coverage are the same. But I did want to go through kind of some of the historical coverage and cost information. So starting back in 2018 and 2019, we previously had had limits at 300 million, and so that was on an occurrence level. And so what that meant is, if we had some catastrophic event that happened in the city, our properties would be insured up to $300 million. At that time, that coverage was considerably less than it is now, as costs continued to escalate at significant amounts. So as you can see, the following year, it went up by 23% and continued to increase every year thereafter. Given the increase in coverage costs, there was a decision made to reduce that coverage down to $150 million per occurrence. So that again is per occurrence. So if we had multiple events happen in the city, each event that damaged our property would be covered up to now currently the $150 million. In today's numbers, though, that's not necessarily a lot of coverage. And so this renewal process started prior to the law department taking over kind of the insurance provisions. And so I think now, in the coming year, I didn't want to be the new person coming in and upheaving everything and making a bunch of changes, but I do think there are some conversations that should occur over the next year as to whether, given current market conditions, inflation, should we look at increasing this coverage amount beyond the current $150 million per occurrence cap? Sorry, Melissa, are you advancing it for me? Am I not able to do it over here? Okay. No worries. So these insurance towers, I think you've seen them before in years past when Elaine and then prior to her, Chris Hills has come to you. But there's a lot of information that's contained on this insurance tower. And what it is, is that we get coverage from a number of different insurers to get up to the total cap that we need of $150 million. But again, everything remains the same that we've had it in the past. So there are just a couple of things that I kind of want to go through on here about what our particular coverage is. So for our general property, our coverage does go up to $150 million. Earthquake and flood insurance is more limited, however, though, and that is capped at $25 million. Our deductible then on that is also different depending upon the type of coverage. So our general all-risk property coverage, our deductible is only $100,000 per occurrence. So that is a good amount. The earthquake and flood, however, our deductible is going to be significantly higher depending upon the nature of the property. So for earthquake deductible, it's the larger of either $100,000 or 5% of the total insurable value of the damaged property. So whichever of those two amounts are going to be larger is what our deductible would be. On the flood, flood deductible is $250,000 except for area that's within a flood zone, and that happens to be the showware center. And so because the showware center is located within a flood hazard zone, both our coverage is reduced and our deductible is increased. So for that property, our coverage is capped at $5 million, and then our deductible is also a minimum increases up to $1 million. So that is some additional limitation there based on the location of the property. And the other policies that renewed were the crime and fidelity liability coverage. And so that coverage protects the city from employee theft, forgery or alteration, computer fraud, funds transfer, or money orders, or counterfeit paper currency. That coverage, though, does protect the city up to $2.5 million, and we do have a $10,000 deductible per loss. That coverage was also recognized a slight reduction in our premium over last year. So we saved $5.10 on that coverage. But hey, it will take any savings that we can get. The policy did not increase. None of the terms and conditions changed, nor did our insurers. And then our drone policy. And so we have a drone liability policy. In the event our police officers are using a drone and it happens to damage somebody's property, we do have coverage up to $2 million for that. That also does not have any deductible. And we have nine drones that are covered through that insurance policy. So looking ahead, the last time that the city conducted an appraisal of its properties was in 2019. Our insurance broker has suggested and recommended that we look at conducting an appraisal every five to eight years. And so that would put us at being due for another appraisal of our properties sometime between 2024 and 2027. Again, since the law just stepped into this process, this wasn't one that I think it's appropriate for us right now to jump in and make an appraisal, but it is, again, a conversation to have over the coming year about undertaking that process. And just given the changes that have happened in the market and the increase in property, I do think it's something that we should consider doing. The value of doing the appraisal or the cost of it was roughly $12,000 at the time that it was done in 2019. I certainly suspect that that has increased significantly, but I do think it would be beneficial for the city to have that information and decide moving forward what it wants to do about insuring its properties. The other issue to consider, too, is when I come to you in January, we're going to be talking about the other coverage, which is significantly more expensive, which is going to be our general liability coverage, our excess workers' compensation coverage, and cyber liability. I'm anticipating that those are going to be at increased costs. As we get in that information, though, I think there's going to be additional conversations to have about, do we continue to maintain in this current insurance market that we're in, or do we look to go back to a risk pool? So previously, long years past, we had been part of WCIA. There were a number of things that happened in the past that resulted in us moving away from that risk pool and now into this self-insured status with just a couple of other cities. But as costs continue to increase, we're going to probably want to sit and look at what is most cost-effective for us. You know, insurance is one of those things that's expensive to procure, and you may never need it, and the hope is that you'll never need it. And so there's going to be some policy decisions to make as to, do we take that money and invest it in additional insurance coverage that we may never need? Or is that money better spent, you know, investing it in other kind of projects for the city or investment account? So some tougher conversations that I think we'll have coming forward, but the good news, at least for next year, on these three policies, is that we realize a little bit of a savings and no other major changes. So do you have any questions for me that I can try to answer?
Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam President. So showware, you said the insurance only capped at $5 million?
It is because it's in a flood hazard.
What is the value of showware, the property? Do we know roughly?
I don't know. I can probably dig into that. I'm sure we have that appraisal value in the past. We do have a statement of values spreadsheet that has some of that information. I don't have it handy, but I can certainly reference what I have and share that with you.
Just curious what the value is.
Yeah, I'm not sure of the value. Certainly, it's not worth, the coverage that we have would not replace that facility. And that's kind of one of my concerns on some of these provisions that we have with $150 million cap, is given the work that we've been doing on the ASB building, the construction of the Quahog facility, seeing what those are coming in at to construct, at least from the ground up, makes me wonder really, how far can this $150 million per occurrence go if we were to have a catastrophic event?
So assesso, right, do they also could have insurance on their building as well, too, or that'd be strictly with the city?
I would think the insurance would be for the building on us. I don't know. They do carry their own insurance, and our contract with them requires that they have some insurance that would cover like their operations and their general liability. I don't know, and I don't believe that they would insure the actual facility itself. That would be on the city.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyce. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Tammy.
Great, thank you so much.
All right, next up, we have 2025 financial report, and we have Michelle Ferguson. Welcome.
All right, good afternoon, Council. I'm Michelle Ferguson, and I will be presenting the May 2025 monthly financial report. All right, first up on this slide is going to be just the general fund revenues for all of the sources. And you can see that for the last three months, that the revenues for 2025 have been coming in higher than they were in 2024. And then we'll flip to the next slide, and then you can see down here at the bottom, this is going to be for all other revenues. So all of the revenues, there's basically everything but taxes. So it's going to be intergovernmental, licenses and permits, charges for services, fines and forfeitures, and then miscellaneous revenues. So the first few months of the year, the revenues were not coming in higher than they were in 2024, but the last two months, they have made a switch, and they are coming in higher than they were in 2024. But overall, they are still about $140,000 short of where they were at this point in time in 2024. But if the trend continues, those revenues will surpass by the end of the year. So in taking a little bit closer look at those revenues on this slide, so that kind of orange-yellow color are things that you may find concerning, and the blue is kind of, it's actually okay. So sales and use tax, there is a variance from 2024 of $355,000 so far this year, but we expected that. So we budgeted accordingly, and as you can see, the percent of budget is slightly higher than where you would expect it to be through May of this year. Business and occupation tax, the variance is quite a bit higher than it was in 2024, about 26%, and that is due to a scheduled increase for square footage rates, as well as some small changes made to the manufacturing gross receipts rates, as well as the retailing gross receipts threshold. The percentage of budget that received so far is only about 25%, and that is due to the second quarter revenues have not yet been received so far through May. For licenses and permits, there is a variance of about $400,000, but it is almost coming in where we'd expect it to be on budget. But that $400,000 is made up of a few different revenues that are coming in lower than they were in 2024, and those would be about $60,000 less for cable franchise fees, $90,000 less for the IFC permit revenues, and those are for fire, $105,000 less for commercial building permits, and $85,000 less for developmental permits. And the fines and forfeitures highlighted in the last monthly report, there is a variance of negative $627,000, and that was due to a fine that we received in 2024, and then it was reversed in 2025. So that will continue to have negative variance probably throughout most of the year. And then highlighted down under expenditures, the fire contracted services, there is a high percentage of budget, and that is just a timing issue of when we submit payments to the PSRFA for their prevention services. So you'll see that percent of budget go down on the next monthly report. But you can see the variance is within reason for the spending so far this year. And then highlighted on this slide, I just highlighted human services because there's a high variance for the expenditures. Now that the human services-related programs in parks and the co-responder program for police are kind of more established, they're starting to spend the budgets. So that's a good thing. And the revenues are slightly lower than they were last year, but that is because it's sales tax revenue, and as those go down, that it'll go down in this fund as well. And then on this slide, there is a high variance for the special assessment debt service. So those are the LIDs that were issued many years ago, so the revenues will continue to decline until they're virtually nothing. There was a spike in 2024, and usually when we have those kind of spikes in revenues, that's because of a sale, and they need to clean up their back payments. So we'll continue to see those revenues decline in the coming years as well. And on the last slide, the insurance had been highlighted. We talked about it last time. Unemployment expenditures are higher than they have been in a long time, and that is just due to claims that are for a higher amount. So there will be a budget change coming closer to the end of the year when we kind of have an idea of what those expenditures are going to be total by the end of the year. And then for liability, the expenditures are actually coming in lower than they have in the last few years, and that has to do with judgments and damages just coming in about $1 million less than they have in prior years. Any questions?
Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam President. What, Michelle, central service, what is that? What's in that bucket?
That is an internal service where we charge like office supplies when departments want to order kind of in bulk, as well as postage. So the money that we get, it just gets spent.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, well, thank you so much, Michelle. It's always great to see you. All right, next we have James Endicott with Public Works Agreement with Dimensional Communications, Inc. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Council. I'm Michelle Ferguson, and I will be presenting the May 2025 monthly financial report. All right, first up on this slide is going to be just the general fund revenues for all of the sources. And you can see that for the last three months, that the revenues for 2025 have been coming in higher than they were in 2024. And then we'll flip to the next slide, and then you can see down here at the bottom, this is going to be for all other revenues. So all of the revenues, there's basically everything but taxes. So it's going to be intergovernmental, licenses and permits, charges for services, fines and forfeitures, and then miscellaneous revenues. So the first few months of the year, the revenues were not coming in higher than they were in 2024, but the last two months, they have made a switch, and they are coming in higher than they were in 2024. But overall, they are still about $140,000 short of where they were at this point in time in 2024. But if the trend continues, those revenues will surpass by the end of the year. So in taking a little bit closer look at those revenues on this slide, so that kind of orange-yellow color are things that you may find concerning, and the blue is kind of, it's actually okay. So sales and use tax, there is a variance from 2024 of $355,000 so far this year, but we expected that. So we budgeted accordingly, and as you can see, the percent of budget is slightly higher than where you would expect it to be through May of this year. Business and occupation tax, the variance is quite a bit higher than it was in 2024, about 26%, and that is due to a scheduled increase for square footage rates, as well as some small changes made to the manufacturing gross receipts rates, as well as the retailing gross receipts threshold. The percentage of budget that received so far is only about 25%, and that is due to the second quarter revenues have not yet been received so far through May. For licenses and permits, there is a variance of about $400,000, but it is almost coming in where we'd expect it to be on budget. But that $400,000 is made up of a few different revenues that are coming in lower than they were in 2024, and those would be about $60,000 less for cable franchise fees, $90,000 less for the IFC permit revenues, and those are for fire, $105,000 less for commercial building permits, and $85,000 less for developmental permits. And the fines and forfeitures highlighted in the last monthly report, there is a variance of negative $627,000, and that was due to a fine that we received in 2024, and then it was reversed in 2025. So that will continue to have negative variance probably throughout most of the year. And then highlighted down under expenditures, the fire contracted services, there is a high percentage of budget, and that is just a timing issue of when we submit payments to the PSRFA for their prevention services. So you'll see that percent of budget go down on the next monthly report. But you can see the variance is within reason for the spending so far this year. And then highlighted on this slide, I just highlighted human services because there's a high variance for the expenditures. Now that the human services-related programs in parks and the co-responder program for police are kind of more established, they're starting to spend the budgets. So that's a good thing. And the revenues are slightly lower than they were last year, but that is because it's sales tax revenue, and as those go down, that it'll go down in this fund as well. And then on this slide, there is a high variance for the special assessment debt service. So those are the LIDs that were issued many years ago, so the revenues will continue to decline until they're virtually nothing. There was a spike in 2024, and usually when we have those kind of spikes in revenues, that's because of a sale, and they need to clean up their back payments. So we'll continue to see those revenues decline in the coming years as well. And on the last slide, the insurance had been highlighted. We talked about it last time. Unemployment expenditures are higher than they have been in a long time, and that is just due to claims that are for a higher amount. So there will be a budget change coming closer to the end of the year when we kind of have an idea of what those expenditures are going to be total by the end of the year. And then for liability, the expenditures are actually coming in lower than they have in the last few years, and that has to do with judgments and damages just coming in about $1 million less than they have in prior years. Any questions?
Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam President. What, Michelle, central service, what is that? What's in that bucket?
That is an internal service where we charge like office supplies when departments want to order kind of in bulk, as well as postage. So the money that we get, it just gets spent.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, well, thank you so much, Michelle. It's always great to see you. All right, next we have James Endicott with Public Works Agreement with Dimensional Communications, Inc. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Council. James Endicott, Deputy Director for IT. Today, I'm here to request approval to move into a contract with, to replace the AV system at Fire Station 74. A little bit of history, the original system was put back in in 2010, and it was upgraded in 2020. We did minor upgrades to kind of help modernize the audio and guest access because that was right after the RFA had split off. So we had to put in a guest access for them. Five years later, we're starting to run into technical issues, as well as the projectors are 15 years old, we're running into resolution issues with modern laptops. So it's just at a time that the technology needs to be upgraded. So the contract we want to enter will address basically audio, video, and guest access to use the conference system up there at Fire Station 74. Any questions?
Any questions, team? All right, I'll go ahead and read the motion. I move to authorize the mayor to sign the Public Works Agreement with Dimensional Communications, Inc., subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the IT Director and City Attorney.
Show move.
Second.
Second.
Our motion and second. Any discussion? Go ahead, Council.
Why are we, is the fire paying for anything, or is the city paying for everything? Just curious.
It's the city is paying for it. From what I'm understanding, the police department now is the primary occupant up there.
Oh, okay.
Where before, I think it was the fire, and so police is kind of getting things renovated for their use up there.
Makes sense. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. Thanks, James.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, we have Parks. Councilmember Michaux.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Today, we have Tona Cow here to talk about the Kent Commons renovation. We have a change order number 12. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Council President Cor and Councilmembers. Good to see you again. Tona Cow Facilities Superintendent. So I wanted to present on change order 12 for Boyce Construction for the Kent Commons renovation project. The city of Kent entered into a contract with Boyce Construction for the renovation of Kent Commons in March 2024. The total cumulative amount of this change order 12 and prior change orders exceed 20% of the original contract amount, thereby requiring formal approval from council. So change order 12 includes installation of a pipe soffit in the restroom, lighting revisions, installation of a rolling printer cart, relocation of office thermostat, additional casework throughout the project, installation of power for the lobby restroom faucet, substitution of a three-form panel to Lumacore, door repairs, installation of a 600 square feet of exterior concrete, fire extinguisher and handrail bracket installation, and addition of stair rail behind the lobby counter. These changes are necessary to address unforeseen additions, ensure code compliance, and meet updated operational requirements. So the total amount of the change order 12 is $86,484,033. So the original contract sum for Boyce was $1.5 million and 02831,099. And then including this change order 12, the revised contract sum would be $1.5 million. right after the RFA had split off, so we had to put in a guest access for them. Five years later, we're starting to run into technical issues, as well as the projectors are 15 years old, we're running into resolution issues with modern laptops, so it's just at a time that the technology needs to be upgraded. So the contract we want to enter will address basically audio, video, and guest access to use the conference system up there at Fire Station 74. Any questions?
Any questions, team? All right, I'll go ahead and read the motion. I move to authorize the mayor to sign the Public Works Agreement with Dimensional Communications, Inc., subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the IT Director and City Attorney. Second.
Second.
Our motion and second, any discussion? Go ahead, Councilmember.
Why are we, is the fire paying for any of this, or is the city paying for everything? Just curious.
It's the city is paying for it. From what I'm understanding, the police department now is the primary occupant up there. Where before, I think it was the fire, and so police is kind of getting things renovated for their use up there.
Makes sense. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, we have Parks, Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Today, we have Tona Cow here to talk about the Kent Commons renovation. We have a change order number 12. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Council President Cor and Councilmembers. Good to see you again. Tona Cow, Facilities Superintendent. So I wanted to present on Change Order 12 for Boyce Construction for the Kent Commons renovation project. The city of Kent entered into a contract with Boyce Construction for the renovation of Kent Commons in March 2024. The total cumulative amount of this Change Order 12 and prior change orders exceed 20% of the original contract amount, thereby requiring formal approval from Council. So Change Order 12 includes installation of a pipe soffit in the restroom, lighting revisions, installation of a rolling printer cart, relocation of office thermostat, additional casework throughout the project, installation of power for the lobby restroom faucet, substitution of a three-form panel to Lumacore, door repairs, installation of a 600 square feet of exterior concrete, fire extinguisher and handrail bracket installation, and addition of stair rail behind the lobby counter. These changes are necessary to address unforeseen additions, ensure code compliance, and meet updated operational requirements. So the total amount of the Change Order 12 is $86,484,033. So the original contract sum for Boyce was 1.5 million and 02,831,099, and then, including this Change Order 12, the revised contract sum would be 1.850,006 and 69 cents. We would like to request approval of Change Order 12 from Council.
Okay, are there any questions for Tona? Go ahead, Councilmember Boyce.
Just for the record, no relationship with Boyce, no proceed come to me, so for the record.
Thanks for the clarification.
Just in case you were wondering.
Councilmember Larmour.
Do we expect any more change orders? I mean, is this, I know they're cover unforeseen, but are there any?
Well, right now, we've already, we are in substantial completion, and that was April 9th, 2025, so then we have to do punchless items.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I will read the motion. I move to authorize the mayor to sign Change Order Number 12 with Boyce Construction, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the Parks Director and City Attorney.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilmember Michelle. Okay, next up, we have Public Works, and in absence of Councilmember Frencher, we'll have Councilmember Boyd taking care of Public Works today.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Today, we're going to be talking about equipment and hardware purchases, software licenses, and maintenance agreement with Transit Asset Management authorized. And today, who will be presenting, this will be Sean Gervin.
Good afternoon, thanks. So we're talking about the fleet software replacement. So our fleet program that we have is the backbone of our entire management of the fleet. This is our maintenance system, this is our parts tracking system, this is how we have the entire history of every single vehicle and piece of equipment in the city tracked. We're here because Faster Windows, which is the system that we currently use, is exiting support this October, which means the company that produces it is no longer going to be producing any updates for it or supporting the software anymore. Additionally, Windows, Microsoft has said Windows 10 Security will not support Faster Windows anymore, and we're migrating over to Windows 11 anyway, and that won't work on Windows 11. Additionally, this is, like I said, a 24-year-old program that we've had working, and there are much more efficient, newer systems possible. That's what that screen looks like when you open up one of our main tracking systems. If you remember what DOS looked like and using like Windows 3.11, you know, I'm not going to say which year I was in school when that happened, but that's what it looked like. So, next slide, please. We had some options we had to consider, so we first got $300,000 operating budget request approved for funding the replacement. That was after I reached out to several different vendors, tried to get a like quote, to see what we were looking at for ballpark figures. We have done a have-by-build analysis, it's up there on the screen there. City Works was not capable, mostly because of the amount of work it would take to actually build this system from scratch. Maintrack was also not capable. We reached out to several vendors, there's a lot of different people who make software that is related to this out in the world. However, Faster, they have a new version called Faster Web, which is web-based, hence the name, best matched the needs and costs that we had come up around with. Next slide. You can see here, this is Jeremy, he's working on his desktop. He has three different windows open, one of the, he's doing a basic PM, a Preventance Maintenance Check on a vehicle. He has to have one open to see the history of the vehicle, one to see the parts he has to request, and one to see the checklist for the PM. Inefficient is just a basic system that it is right now. It's gotten to the point where it's very, very clunky, and we won't be able to use it anymore anyway. So just giving you an idea of what it kind of looks like for the guys on the ground. Next slide. So we're going to, we're asking to move forward with Faster Web. The initial installation plus five full years of maintenance of that software comes in at 304,679. The quote, they said they still honored it after they changed their name from the company, which was really wonderfully timed for us. They are a very long-term vendor, we have been using them for over 24 years, they're able to migrate all the data over as well, so we will be able to have all of that historical data for all of our vehicles, which is, as a fleet manager, vitally important to my job and for all the maintenance technicians. It'll be web-based, so there's no need to install a system server or a data server or anything like that, we don't have to build something in IT. Has a lot of more enhanced features. We have a mostly Ford fleet, and it has telematic integration for that, so we'll be able to see fault codes and mileage checks in real time, we'll be able to look them up whenever we want to. It has some customer-facing requests and alerts, which is kind of cool, something that you'll get when you go to other auto shops now, you'll get text messages saying your vehicle's ready, or you'll be able to like log in and say, hey, I have a request for this vehicle that I drive. It's a lot more updated, sort of stuff we're more familiar with now industry-wide. And then Security and Networking has reviewed all the vendor docs, and they have no concerns over the Faster Web system. And just as a callback to that earlier photo, that's what that webpage looks like when operating on a PM schedule. It's on one sheet, so our guys can do all the stuff in one page. Next, please. Questions? Yes, sir?
What a question today. So all this can get migrated over, you got a 24 arcade system, and they're just going to migrate right over every day?
That's one of the great things, when we went through the quoting process on this one, we had asked several different vendors to see what it would like to migrate that data, and it was several hundred thousand dollars in many months to actually get that data and migrate it over. Using the same vendor kind of skips that, it's their data, they know how to migrate it, they can kind of hit the button and just switch it all over. And like I said, they're a very responsive vendor for us, they've worked great for us in the years.
That's awesome. That's usually a problem with the migration, that's good.
Okay, do we have any other questions, Councilmembers? Because at this time, I'm going to read the motion. I move to authorize the mayor to sign an Equipment and Hardware Purchase, Software License, and Maintenance Agreement with Transit Asset Management, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the Public Works Director and City Attorney.
Second.
Second, any other question? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye, I'm sorry. All those opposed? None, so the motion passes. Next on our agenda, we will be speaking, talking about ordinance dedicating public right-of-way to Meet Me on Meeker Project, and we'll have Cheryl Rolcik-Wilcox that will be speaking. Cheryl.
Hi, everyone. I'm Cheryl Rolcik-Wilcox, I'm Public Works Property and Acquisition Analyst. The Meet Me on Meeker Project from Thompson, or from Washington to Interurban is in the design process, with construction starting in late 2025 and anticipated to be completed in 2027. The city needs to dedicate its right-of-way a portion of five city-owned parcels that are adjacent to West Meeker Street and are part of the Naden Assemblage, so that orange area is the total of those parcels. Once dedicated, the property will become part of the West Meeker Street Right-of-Way, and this dedication will formally revise and define the boundaries of the right-of-way for those utilizing it, including utilities, cable, and telecommunications providers. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, no questions? Okay, at this time, I'm going to read the motion. I move to adopt ordinance number 4519, authorizing the dedication of portions of city-owned property for right-of-way purposes for the construction of Meet Me on Meeker Project.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye. Oh, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, Cheryl.
Okay, next on our Public Works agenda, we have relocation and reimbursement agreement with Mill Creek Reestablishment Project Little Property, and we have Melissa Dahl up to speak. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Committee members. Melissa Dahl, I'm an engineer in Public Works Design Engineering, here to bring the relocation and reimbursement agreement. The agreement is with Quest/Centrylink, they're also known as Lumen. They're all kind of bundled together, I might slip up and call them one or the other, but they are all effectively the same company. So I wanted to give you an overview of some in-progress and future Mill Creek projects that we have. Just, we always, I've shared a number of projects with you all over the years regarding Mill Creek, and we often say Mill Creek's a piece of an overall puzzle. This is more of the puzzle that we're currently working on, we have been working on. So I just wanted to highlight this to you, the purpose of all these projects is to provide habitat restoration, flood risk reduction. Why this work is so important? Last winter, we didn't have flooding along James Street. James Street stayed open as a result of no flooding, so that was a big win in our books. So that's why we continue to work through these projects. It's a great start, but we wanted to continue to improve the system. Moving to the next slide, thank you. Now specifically, I want to talk to you about one project. This is the Little Property Channel Relocation Project. Now, if you look at the pictures on the right-hand side, these are pictures taken pretty recently in the last week of some homes along Woodford Avenue, taken from the Mill Creek side. We did complete work out here last year, it helped move the creek a little ways, or lower the creek elevation a little ways behind these homes, but you'll still notice it's right in people's backyards. So we helped quite a bit with that work, but we really want to look at relocating it away from those homes. So looking at the map on the right-hand side, or sorry, the left-hand side, excuse me, the dark blue shows the current alignment of Mill Creek. Again, you'll notice how it's very close to people's backyards. The light blue is what we're proposing for the channel relocation. We really want to get it away from homes, but we also want to be able to provide increased floodplain storage and more flood storage on the site itself. So it allows us to utilize the rest of the wetland that is the Little Property. Moving to the next slide. So starting on the map this time, it's the same map that you just saw, but you'll notice, it's a little difficult to see on the screen, but there is a orange and green striped line immediately to the right of the existing Mill Creek footprint. That shows the current alignment of Sentrylink's fiber optic duct bank. Now, if you look at the cross-section on the right-hand side, the green shows the existing duct bank location. It is currently in conflict with our proposed channel relocation. So we are looking at proposing to lower the duct bank to the orange location just below in just the two crossing locations. It's basically the same footprint, but it's going to be lower in those areas. And what makes this a little more complicated is that Sentrylink is in their own easement at this property, so we are responsible for their relocation costs in this situation. This work is necessary, we are not able to relocate the creek if we do not do this relocation. Now, the creek relocation is, as we mentioned before, important, it'll move the creek away from people's homes, it'll add additional floodplain storage, and additional flood risk reduction in the area. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Any other questions from Melissa? I'm sorry.
Hey, Melissa, thank you, good to see you. So we're moving, well, we're not moving it, we're just lowering.
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll be, Sentrylink handles the construction, but what they'll end up doing is they'll have a directional drilling equipment, so they won't need to dig a big hole, they'll basically have a piece of equipment that will drill underneath.
So they'll just, okay.
Yeah, so there shouldn't be, they'll be doing all the work on-site, there shouldn't be any impact, or very minimal impacts to James Street, they're not going to have to shut down traffic to do this work.
Okay, and then this is going to be part of our budget for the Mill Creek project?
It is covered under the drainage funds for this work.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, no other questions from Melissa? Okay, at this time, I'd like to read the motion. I move to authorize the mayor to sign the relocation and reimbursement agreement with Quest Corporation for Mill Creek Reestablishment Project Little Property, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the Public Works Director and City Attorney.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, at this time, all those, let's take a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye, yes, discussion.
Okay, do we have any discussion? Sorry.
No.
No discussion? Okay, at this time, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, Melissa.
Next up is Info Only, and we're talking about the 2025 Transportation Improvement Board Grants, and we have David Payne presenting.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. David Payne, City Transportation Planner, here to present on the Summer Transportation Improvement Board applications or nominees for this year. Each year, we apply for the Transportation Improvement Board, one of our big three sources of grants. You can see the image on the left is Reef Road looking east from about, let's say, 300 feet east of Military Road South. So you can see the dashed line there on left, it's a concept of where we might put a walking path, that's one of the applications I'll go over. So I'll go over each of the three application projects in turn, and in the categories that they're under. So the first is a repeat application from last year. Last year, we went after the Southeast 248th and 116th Avenue Southeast intersection to improve it as a roundabout. So you can see the concept at the lower right, it's been refined a little bit since last year, so it's coming together a little bit more. You see the image at the upper right showing what the existing conditions look like. So this would be including, adding a shared-use path or bicycle and pedestrian accommodations around the facility, and making connections to the east and to the south. This intersection is pretty uniquely situated on the east hill, because both of the corridors are in the city's comprehensive plan for a low-traffic-stress connection for bikes. So this is sort of in the middle of it with Southeast 248th, with all of the wonderful community amenities that we have, a pair of elementary schools, Daniel Sartone, Martin Sartone and Daniel Elementary, a number of parks, and so this is a well-situated project. We think it'll be competitive for TIB. Next slide, please. The second is under the Active Transportation Program. This is for one of the projects that we added in the Transportation Improvement Program just two months ago for this year. This is for the South Reef Road sidewalk connection. So if you've been out on Reef Road or Military Road South in the last couple of weeks, you'll notice that the intersection with Military Road South and Reef is under construction currently. Those are improvements to the northeast quadrant, adding a sidewalk, and so this would, this project would pick up from where that project ends and take it all the way to West Fenwick Park. There's a crosswalk with an RRFB crossing just where that orange line ends, so this would be an extension of the sidewalk on the north side of the road. Next slide, please. And the last project is under the Complete Streets Program. This is along Military Road South from approximately 200, South 264th Street at the north end of the illustration, can't really make out the labels, that's okay, to South 272nd at the bottom, and it would include at the center, right next to Glen Nelson Park, an enhanced crosswalk also with RFB, with the beacons, to allow for some enhanced crossings there. This also is a project that would connect a number of community locations, park, and enable a better connection to the transit at the Starlight Station that's under construction just off of to the image to the west. Again, this is an information item, the, these are grants that we'll be applying for. This particular project may also include some repavements along the path, along the project limits. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the project.
David, thank you. It's always good to see you. This one here, is that just for the sidewalks, or is that for complete? So is a sidewalk on one side and then on the other side? Is that what I'm looking at over there?
Yes, it's a hint at the location for a walking path. The application is called the Complete Streets Program because it allows us to apply for both sidewalk improvements, bicycle improvements, and pavement improvements, striping with the RFB crossing in the middle. So the concept currently is that there would be a walk path on the east side of the road between South 264th and Glen Nelson Park, or 268th, I believe, and then that's where the RFB would be located, and then the walk path would be switched to the west side there due to some spacing constraints, and then it would continue south from that point.
Okay, yeah, that was my question, because I see that. And then I just, just to comment about, when we're looking at roundabouts, I think we need to also look at maybe education piece on how to use roundabouts, because that seemed to be something I've seen our community not being very well-horsed in.
I'll take that.
Just a comment. Thank you.
Well, I think the roundabout, the 248th, I mean, if you ever been in there, I mean, it's like wherever. I mean, if there's a place that needed roundabout, that is one place that definitely needed roundabout, so that is good. What's the timeframe? You might have said, but I didn't hear you, as far as, once we know this project get As far as once we know, this project get...
So we'll be applying over the course of the next month. We'll probably hear about November. And then we hope, of course, hope to bring back any acceptance in either December or the first meeting in January. TIB is pretty prompt about wanting us to put the resources on the ground.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, thank you, David. Madam Chair, Madam President, that's all for Public Works.
Thank you so much. Thank you, David. And I'll make a comment about the 248th as well that I, especially going from on 116th. North and south, it does get pretty packed, morning and evening. So I think it'll be very, very helpful. But again, the education piece, something we really need to keep in mind. So, thank you, David. It's good to see you. With that, we are adjourned until 5:15 for council workshop. Thank you, everyone.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, July 15. We have two items on our agenda, and first we'll go ahead and get started with Community Court. We have Candace and Judge Friends here. Welcome.
All right. Good evening, council members. Thank you for having me back to talk about Community Court. With me is our Court Administrator Candace Enders and our Resource Coordinator Josie Hildebrandt, who's a big part of Community Court. The program is flourishing. Our next Community Court calendar is this Friday. We have 96 people currently scheduled to appear on that calendar right now. So it continues to grow. I think the last time I was here, I talked to you a little bit about our separate Drug Ordinance Calendar that is scheduled at noon on our Community Court days. And I think the last time I talked to you, we were just starting that out. The attendance was very low, and I had high hopes for it. It has grown faster than I thought. We are now consistently around 48% to 50% attendance rate on that calendar, which is huge for that demographic. It has not taken nearly as long as I thought it would, so it's growing very fast. Our general compliance with non-drug ordinance cases is way up. Part of that is due to some of the financial assistance we've been able to offer on the Community Court calendar to cover the cost of affirmative conditions associated with sentences, mostly treatment-based evaluations, domestic violence treatment, anger management, stuff like that. Because we're able to fund that, the compliance rates have really skyrocketed off of that calendar. So we're seeing more people in treatment, more people participating in alcohol-drug treatment, and in particular on the Drug Ordinance Calendar, medically assisted treatment, which we are finding is kind of the key upfront if we're going to see early success in those cases. It's a conversation I have with participants as they come in, and as I'm sure you're aware, most of the cases we're dealing with on that calendar involve fentanyl and methamphetamine. To suggest that an individual can simply cut that off because the court orders them to is simply not realistic. So upfront, we have a conversation with those participants, and we come to kind of an understanding, really a middle ground. I understand that they can't simply stop because I tell them to, but they have to understand that I can't sit back and simply monitor their ongoing use. So there has to be some middle ground. That middle ground generally is medically assisted treatment. Health Point, which is pretty close to us up on Pec Highway, has walk-in appointments. They have been a big help to us. So we're getting people on Suboxone and other medically assisted treatment substances really within 24 hours of me seeing a participant. That at least is giving people the opportunity to give them a fair chance at complying, and the results have been good so far. And I think that is one of the reasons why we're seeing such increased attendance on that calendar, because people are able to comply. So that's been huge. Talking to Ms. Hildebrandt earlier today, she's seeing greater connection and follow-through with our resource providers. So more participants are connecting with those providers and following through with them after the fact. My benchmate Judge Geip is on the Therapeutic Court Committee for the Judges Association. I already knew this, but he confirmed with me our program is head and shoulders above pretty much any other community court program around. We have greater volume on our calendar. We're affecting more people. We're reaching more people than I think any other program out there. So things are really exciting. It's going well. Councilmember Boyd and Ann Fincher, it's been a few months now, but they stopped by, which was great. Loved to see you, and kind of saw that calendar in action. So that was great. But that's kind of the update. We're heading in the right direction.
Counselor, your voice.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you very much. A very great program. So when you talk to the individuals, are you talking to them as a group, or you actually do 101?
It's individual. I mean, it's in a group setting. It's in a group setting, so everybody hears the conversation. Some of it might be repetitive, but I try and gear it towards that person's individual circumstances.
That's a lot of time consuming, isn't it?
It is.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, July 15. We have two items on our agenda, and first we'll go ahead and get started with Community Court. We have Candace and Judge Friends here. Welcome. You're welcome to come up to the podium and share.
All right. Good evening, council members. Thank you for having me back to talk about Community Court. With me is our Court Administrator Candace Enders and our Resource Coordinator Josie Hildebrand, who's a big part of Community Court. The program is flourishing. We are, our next Community Court calendar is this Friday. We have 96 people currently scheduled to appear on that calendar right now. So it continues to grow. I think the last time I was here, I talked to you a little bit about our separate drug ordinance calendar that is scheduled at noon on our Community Court days. And I think the last time I talked to you, we were just starting that out. The attendance was very low, and I had high hopes for it. It has grown faster than I thought. We are now consistently around 48% to 50% attendance rate on that calendar, which is huge for that demographic. It has not taken nearly as long as I thought it would, so it's growing very fast. Our general compliance with non-drug ordinance cases is way up. Part of that is due to some of the financial assistance we've been able to offer on the Community Court calendar to cover the cost of affirmative conditions associated with sentences, mostly treatment-based evaluations, domestic violence treatment, anger management, stuff like that. Because we're able to fund that, the compliance rates have really skyrocketed off of that calendar. So we're seeing more people in treatment, more people participating in alcohol or drug treatment, and in particular on the drug ordinance calendar, medically assisted treatment, which we are finding is kind of the key upfront if we're going to see early success in those cases. It's not, it's a conversation I have with participants as they come in, and as I'm sure you're aware, most of the cases we're dealing with on that calendar involve fentanyl and methamphetamine. To suggest that an individual can simply cut that off because the court orders them to is simply not realistic. So upfront, we have a conversation with those participants, and we come to kind of an understanding, really a middle ground. I understand that they can't simply stop because I tell them to, but they have to understand that I can't sit back and simply monitor their ongoing use. So there has to be some middle ground. That middle ground generally is medically assisted treatment. Health Point, which is pretty close to us up on Pack Highway, has walk-in appointments. They have been a big help to us. So we're getting people on Suboxone and other medically assisted treatment substances really within 24 hours of me seeing a participant. That at least is giving people the opportunity to give them a fair chance at complying, and the results have been good so far. And I think that is one of the reasons why we're seeing such increased attendance on that calendar, because people are able to comply. So that's been huge. Talking to Ms. Hildebrand earlier today, she's seeing greater connection and follow-through with our resource providers. So more participants are connecting with those providers and following through with them after the fact. My benchmate, Judge Gype, is on the Therapeutic Court Committee for the Judges Association. I already knew this, but he confirmed with me, our program is head and shoulders above pretty much any other Community Court program around. We have greater volume on our calendar. We're affecting more people. We're reaching more people than I think any other program out there. So things are, it's really exciting. It's going well. Councilmember Boyd and Ann Fincher, it's been a few months now, but they stopped by, which was great. Loved to see you, and kind of saw that calendar in action. So that was great. But that's kind of the update. We're heading in the right direction.
Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you very much. A very great program. So when you talk to the individuals, are you talking to them as a group, or you actually do one-on-one chat?
It's individual. I mean, it's in a group setting. It's in a group setting, so everybody hears the conversation. Some of it might be repetitive, but I try and gear it towards that person's individual circumstances. It is. The preparation for that calendar is, it takes a lot, because you know, the calendar has to keep moving, and 96, that's a high number, but generally, we're averaging somewhere as around 70. So it doesn't really dip below that.
Are there any things that you're doing different? What's working well, what's not working well?
Well, I mean, there are certainly are challenges. One of the challenges is quality alcohol or drug treatment for individuals that have state insurance only. That's a big one. The private providers, and I hate to put it this way, but oftentimes, it's just a better, it's a better product overall. That's not the fault of the individuals running. The agencies that accept state insurance, they're underfunded, and they're under-resourced, and the demographic in their catering to is gigantic. So there's a lot of disadvantages there. If we had more of those providers accepting state insurance, it would certainly make it easier on us. Another challenge is quality mental health services. That's statewide, probably nationwide, really. So I mean, that's an ongoing issue. Housing, of course, is always an issue. We have housing available and funding for housing available for the fentanyl cases and opioid cases in general. That probably accounts for probably above 60% of the housing needs that we see, but there's still another, you know, 35%, 40% that we don't really have a good beat on. We're not, those folks, we're not reaching on a high enough level when it comes to housing assistance. I don't have an answer for that right now. There are resources out there, but they're quickly filled. I know Ms. Hildebrand is, this is part of the bane of her existence, trying to come up with more resources for housing for folks that don't fall under the opioid funding. But you know, it's something we're working on, and we're chipping away at it. But those are probably our three biggest challenges on the calendar, even with this demographic.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Another thing that we're seeing as well is some of our providers are now not going to be able to attend every month, because this is coming from a loss of federal funding and layoffs that they're experiencing, which is unfortunate. We can still, we're still maintaining those providers. We can still direct refer and do handoffs to those providers, which is still effective, but it's not the same as them being there in person and meeting the individuals there in the courthouse. But they're still there. We're still able to make the connection. I hope that we're not going to see too much of that, but the reality is that, you know, the federal funding is going away in a lot of important areas, and we're going to feel it eventually.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Councilmember Boyd, please.
Hello, Judge. How you doing?
Good.
Nice seeing you again. Ever since I sat in your court that day, I've been just bragging about you. You know that? You probably heard. So, yeah, you guys do great work, real great work, and I'm glad to hear from you, you know, a person with high authority, notice that you can't just tell a person to stop doing drugs or stop drinking, and they're going to stop. You got to give them the assistance. You got to give them the referrals. And I'm glad that you do that. You've done that in your court. I saw you. You did that, more than the majority of the people that you talked to, you referred them out. And I think one of the things that we did talk about when I was in your court that day was about the court morbidity, the dual diagnosis. We need to start discussing, talking to individuals or having a professional talk to individuals who are also dealing with mental issues. Because a lot of times, people, you know, they're doing drugs and alcohol, trying to cover up their mental issue. And that's, I think, one of the things that we should really be addressing. And I don't know if you guys are doing that, but I think that'd be a good idea. You guys are doing great. You're doing good work.
Appreciate that. We are, dual diagnosis evaluations are very important. Unfortunately, a lot of the time, those have to be piecemealed. What I mean by that, they're separated. So a person might get a mental health intake or evaluation in one location, but they're going to get alcohol or drug evaluation somewhere else. I mean, it's fine, but I don't, it's not as effective as kind of a one-stop location. So in the limited places where you can receive both at the same time, not in two separate locations, in my experience, has been much more effective for our participants. There's just not enough of those resources right now.
Okay. But you do agree that that would help, right?
Absolutely.
Yes, okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Once again, you guys are doing great work, and I'm planning on coming again, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you so much, Judge. Any other questions or comments? I think this is a great program. I'm, yeah, very excited, and I will plan on stopping by. I'll connect with you both on what's a good time Monday. And, yeah, and I do appreciate that. I had one question about, sort of like, do you see repeat, like, individuals who have already went through the program, but they're coming back? Is there a percentage or a rate of individuals who are falling?
Definitely. Definitely. And I can't give you exact numbers on it, but it's not uncommon for us to see somebody have success for a period of time, maybe four or five months, and then a relapse happens, something traumatic happens in their life, they lose housing or something along those lines, and they fall off. What I try to impress upon folks, and I try and talk about this upfront, is when that happens, don't run away from it. Don't run away from it. Come back, talk to us, and let's get back on the horse and get back on the path again. And that's what I try to encourage. Otherwise, you know, the person's more likely to ebb, scund, and be in bench warrant status for a period of time. They're probably going to pick up additional crimes, and of course, they get back down deeper into that hole. So the faster I can get them back in after something like that happens, the greater chance we can get them back on track again. Now, it doesn't always work out that way as often as I would like, but certainly, that's what I'm trying to encourage.
And I don't know if you have the number of how many individuals have been through the program? Just kind of putting it out.
That would be a...
Since we started.
Yeah, that'd be a tough one. We started the program in May of 2019.
Yeah.
I had one provider. It was Kim Powers with Reach, and we had calendars where there was nobody there. We had calendars where there might be one person there. First, we started to pick up, and it started to gain some momentum, and we were building by the end of 2019 into early 2020. And of course, COVID happened, shut the program down again, and then it was challenging to get it back up again. I would say, you know, we're, to answer that question, I would say since probably the middle part of 2022, we have averaged at least 70-plus individuals appearing on the calendar every single month. That does not account for all the individuals that Ms. Hildebrand is able to see on off-Community Court days, which is why her position is so critical, because Ms. Hildebrand can do a needs assessment any day, Monday through Friday, and connect people to resources on the spot. She's also in the jails, creating release plans. So really, Ms. Hildebrand gives us the ability to have Community Court every day.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Yes, Councilmember Boyd.
Yes, Judge, I have another question. Recently, I believe it was back in April, we passed a SODA ordinance. Do you think, or could it be possible that the increase of your cases so far as drug-related or had something to do with our SODA that we just passed? You said you saw an increase in people, right? I mean, clients, right?
Not, I haven't seen a huge increase in SODA charges just yet. There's been a few that's come through. As it relates to the drug ordinance calendar in Community Court, what I'm doing is reserving on issuing the SODA order until I can see them on the Community Court calendar. And the reason that I'm doing that is they'll have a needs assessment. We'll know exactly what resources that they're going to try and connect with. If those resources are here in the city of Kent, then we want to build those exceptions into the SODA order so they can be at those locations and not be in violation. So that's how I'm handling that right now. But I expect that we're going to see an increased volume. It just hasn't happened just yet.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Boyd, we're good? All right. Candace or Josie, you have anything to add? All right. No, I appreciate you. Thank you so much for this amazing program, and...
Thank you. Thank you for having us. Thank you so much.
Hearing about it. Love that it's making a positive impact in our communities. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have our GIS update, and we have Heath Braket here. Welcome again. It's good to see you. It's been a while.
It hasn't been terribly long. Yeah, council members, thanks for having me again. I'm happy to be here to give you another little update on kind of what's going on in GIS. You know, it's an exciting time to be in GIS, especially at the city. The adoption rate of GIS in the city has been kind of increasing for a number of years now, and it continues to grow. We're at a time where we really have realized we need to do some major expansion, and I'll get on that a little bit. But I just wanted to give you a few little updates on things that have happened over the past year, things we're working on right now. Just to remind you, Public Works GIS, we're responsible for administering the entire GIS platform in the city, tending to the GIS needs of the Public Works Department, and then also assisting the other departments that don't have any GIS needs right now. And... Okay, I was like, I was like, wait, what am I... So when people talk about the components of GIS, they usually talk about five components of GIS. You know, people, the data, the processes involved in GIS, and of course, there's a ton of software, and there's a lot of hardware now involved in GIS too. And I hear them talking about this, and these are the components that you need to get going, but we tend to not talk about policy, and I wanted to just kind of make sure that we start talking about kind of governance and the responsibility of governance of this platform, you know, whenever we're coming and talking to you, because it makes for a big component. You can't really have a successful program run if you don't have some sort of governance around it. So I want you to kind of keep these six kind of components in mind as I talk to you, and the next slides that'll be coming up will all have this same diagram in the upper right corner, highlighting the particular components that each of these topics address, because we do address all six of them in our program. Last year, when I presented to you, I presented on a lot of the high-level topics that we're hitting that were very system-wide, but I wanted to kind of touch on some of the core foundational stuff that the Public Works GIS group still continues to do. And utility data management is, has always been one of the core functions of Public Works GIS, and it continues to be. Without mapping all of the GIS, you know, our utility and our street-level data, we wouldn't really have a foundation of GIS, you know? And now, the utility data has become even more important, because it is the foundation of our asset management program for our Public Works operations staff. All of the work they do is directly tied to the GIS assets that my group maps. And the way that we get this stuff mapped, primarily, it comes from ASBILTS. And we are the custodians, the librarians, essentially, of all of the ASBILTS within the city. If there is a construction project that deals with any civil infrastructure under the ground or at street level, those ASBILTS from Public Works Capital Improvement Projects, from Parks Development Projects, from private development projects, all of those after construction completion are filtered to our team. We then index those, add those into Laserfish, our document management system, and then use those ASBILTS to map out where those assets are into our GIS system. We tended, over the past five years, we've averaged about 50 ASBILTS per year that we're processing. So that's taking the ASBILT, indexing it, making it available to everybody, and then mapping all of the infrastructure from that ASBILT. And now that we have Laserfish, and we have a modern GIS system, we've been able to use a little bit of GIS scripting magic to add in this direct linkage between the GIS asset and the ASBILT. So that if you go into our GIS system and you select an asset, you can directly click on the link there, and it'll open up that ASBILT document in Laserfish, so you can get more information about the project that was used to install that asset, or just that asset itself. We've got thousands of ASBILTS, you know, now in our system. And so I was doing a little fact-checking, looking back, and our oldest-recorded ASBILT is from 1924. It was a wood, a wood water pipe that was installed. It doesn't exist anymore. But the ASBILT does. The record of it still does. You know, and then, you know, as you can see there, we have a ton of assets that we've mapped. You know, just in the storm system alone, we have over 100,000 assets mapped. Sewer systems got approximately 50,000 assets mapped, and water system's about the same as well. Last time I saw you, it was in March. You guys approved our new six-year imagery contract. I just want to give you a quick update on that. The contract was for flights in 2025, or 2025, 2027, and 2029. So as soon as we got that contract signed, they started flying. The flyover was complete in May of 2025. We, I just got word from the provider that our certified imagery, the imagery that is actually like really ground-truthed, should be delivered to us. I had a schedule last, in 2023's flight, we got that in November. They're targeting August, September this year. And, you know, with imagery, time's money, right? They fly it, and that's a very static point in time, so the longer it takes them to deliver to us, you know, things are changing on the ground. So I'm really excited about that. As a reminder, you know, each of these flights, we also get a bleak imagery. We don't have a viewer of our own making that can see it, but Eagle View, our imagery provider, has a viewer. They've recently come out with a new web-based viewer that our staff can use. My staff has been working on configuring that new application to get us off of the old one. It's got a number of improvements. It's got our enterprise login, so we, our logins in that system are tied directly to the same logins we use now for, you know, Outlook, Workday, all those sorts of things. And we've got, we've convened a small group of power users in the city that use the old application to help kind of consult on, you know, the changes that we've made, and we're planning to release that to staff in this fall. And that's now a free update. We used to pay a couple thousand dollars a year for that, and now that was included in the contract as well. In June of this year, a few staff attended the Washington State GIS Conference. It's held every year. It's usually in Tacoma. This year, it was also in Tacoma. Park sent their GIS staff, Cassidy Sawyer. Public Works sent a few staff as well to this. It's a really cost-effective way to network, get a bunch of information. The presentations are usually performed by other government staff in the state, so the topics are really relevant. It's a great opportunity to network, to learn about new things. Andy Sauls is one of my panelists. He presented this year as well. He gave his presentation on sewer taps. Doesn't sound that exciting, except, you know, our TV trucks, our TV truck goes and TVs the sewer lines and makes all of these observations in the sewer line, and some of those observations, as it goes down the line, are where are taps, you know, from businesses or from, you know, private residences coming into the sewer line. It's really important to our sewer operations department. They get those as observations, and he's then got an automated process to turn that tabular data from that into GIS data that it's attached directly to those sewer lines. So operations staff have access to that information directly in their maps, too. And he had a line of people waiting for him like 15 minutes after the presentation. It was really exciting to see. Yeah. Yeah, it's a great conference. As long as it's in Tacoma, we try to get at least somebody there every year. We learn a lot. So I mentioned, you know, GIS usage is growing, and it's time for us to really do an upgrade. Over the past five years, we've seen a fourfold increase in the amount of traffic we have to our web GIS, and that's just internally. That's just staff internally. Over the past few years, we've been working on the plan to upgrade the entire system. Last year, when I was here, I alluded to it. I talked about that. David Lemonager from IT and I have been working on that plan. We had a system design in place when I came and talked to you. We had a system design in place when I came and talked to you and we're getting ready to implement it. At the same time, a week after I presented to you, we went down to the Esri conference in San Diego, which is happening right now, actually, this year. We went down, we had the opportunity to actually meet with their solutions engineers to review our plan and they said, your plan looks great, the design looks great, but there are certain elements of the plan that we expected to be able to do in-house that they let us know we didn't have the tools at hand to do it. So this winter, we we spent some time working on a contract with them to get them to provide some consulting services and to help us get across the finish line. This spring, they reviewed our plan, they reviewed our entire system and highlighted some some applications that would be deprecated as we upgraded this new system. We spent the spring kind of working, preparing for that and now we are prepared to do the upgrade. Next week, we're going to do the test system, going to update everything and test, make sure that's, you know, working properly, there's no hiccups. And then in August, we're scheduled to upgrade the entire production system. We're moving to entirely new servers. IT has built the new servers out for us already. We're going to move our system over to that. We're changing our domain, which really just, the server names right now are still on that CI dot Kent dot WA dot US domain, which kind of locks us into an old paradigm. So we're going to change all those server names over onto our Kent, Kent WA dot gov domain, which is going to kind of help with exposure. It'll help us to more easily share content with the public when we want to. It'll give our internal staff better access to it as well. And the nice thing about kind of moving that over is as we're doing this upgrade, there will be no impact to our staff users while we're doing the upgrade. The current system will remain in place while we build an entirely new system mimicking the system and then we'll just port people over to the new system once it's built. So we're really excited about that. That's going to, you know, if you look at this, the graph right here, right, what that's really telling us is how many requests the servers are getting. And these servers were built in 2015 with an expected amount of traffic and they've kind of reached their maximum capacity of the amount of traffic they can take. And the news, the new servers that are being built are being built with greater resources and will be able to take on this continued expected growth too. I don't know if you remember this particular slide, I showed it to you at the last presentation, but this is kind of how we envision our users in the system, right? We want to make sure that everybody at the city is using GIS. And so we kind of, we break those roles into, you know, professional staff and general staff. And general staff shouldn't really have to have GIS skills. They should just have enough at their fingertips to be able to answer the questions they want. And we've seen a huge uptick in, you know, our GIS viewers adopting that. That's, that's the reason for that traffic increase that I showed you on the last slide. We don't have more analysts. Over the past five years, I think we've added two analysts to departments. We haven't changed the number of administrators. It's, all that traffic is being generated because staff are really adopting this program. And when it comes to kind of building governance and policy and things like that, this graph is what we really kind of reflect upon, right? We're not, we're not building governance and policy around the administrators and the analysts. We're building it around making sure that our end users have what they need and don't have to do the extra work to really become a GIS professional. And that's, that's what we're driving kind of all of our policy around. And these are GIS analysts, right? This is, this is who we kind of consider, you know, the GIS family. And it takes a village to really pull anything together and to get something to really grow and thrive. And so together, we really treat, treat it that way, right? IT is responsible for the hardware within the system. Public Works GIS is responsible for maintaining the software and all the software support and technical troubleshooting on the software. That's, that's my team's responsibility. When it comes to the departmental needs, you know, each of the departmental GIS analysts, you know, kind of can handle the data needs of their departments. So Public Works GIS handles the GIS, the the data needs of Public Works. ECD has that representation. Police now has that representation and Parks does too. So Public Works GIS doesn't really get involved in their day-to-day operations, but we work with them hand in hand regularly. And then Public Works GIS is also responsible for really keeping up to date all of the governance and the policy, but we rely heavily on the GIS analysts, the rest of the team, to review that and make sure that their department's needs are met and that the policy that we're setting is understandable for everybody too. This, I, I can't tell you how happy I am with the way this group works together. You know, my team's all relatively new and relatively young and they've just really adopted the mindset of we all work together. Police's new data analyst and data slash GIS analyst is new and we've incorporated her right into the group. She's been a great addition. It's, we're really trying to embody the values of the city on an everyday basis, working together, you know, with the single purpose of making this a better thing for everybody. And that's a, that's what I have for you.
Thank you, Heath. It's good to see the GIS family growing and I know Councilmember Dennis Higgins, former Councilmember Dennis Higgins, would be very excited about this presentation. Just a couple of questions, I guess. So data protection, so, you know, we don't, so, you know, our information that we have, like, how is is it protected? Do we have, do we work with IT on making sure that our, some of our, you know, I guess this infrastructure, yeah, that we have.
Absolutely. And that's why, you know, it's nice to have a direct IT person here. Like I said, IT is responsible for the hardware and currently, all of our hardware, all of our servers are internal servers. And so the only data that we are willing to even expose outside of, you know, our firewall gets vetted, you know, through a number of systems and we know that, you know, there's, we follow the same IT standards for data, data management.
Protection.
Everything else. And then in order to share something out, it, you know, we get approval from the actual data owners, the data managers in those departments.
Okay.
They have to request that it goes out. But we definitely, the Esri platform takes security very seriously too. Esri is a major software.
Yeah.
Provider and they do take it very seriously. They, they meet all of the city's needs. But when it comes to kind of managing security, we still, that is 100%.
It's still like, just like admin, admin people have access to, okay.
Yeah.
My second question, open source basically for our residents. I mean, we have a couple of, like, when we were asking for feedback or surveys, we have some maps, like, you know, our residents go on and look at for, like, example, parks, you know, or any other surveys we're asking for, like, okay, what do you think is happening in this area or what do you think, you know, I just kind of, so do we have, I, I don't know, I haven't explored as a resident if there's just like a map for open source for residents to see services in their, in their neighborhoods, not, not sharing the, you know, like, I guess, private information, but that. And then the sec, and the third piece was like, how is police using GIS? Heat maps for crimes or is it just something else for using it for?
Yeah, let me, let me answer the, the question first about kind of, you know, sharing data out with the public. We, we have the foundation of the platform to share with the public and we're able to share web maps with the public. We are able to share data with the public and allow them to download that data. We get to make the decision on what that is. We don't have, currently have a lot of data available for download, but it's, it's something that we plan to do and we would like to do. It hasn't, it hasn't been our biggest priority yet at the moment, but the, you know, all of those checks and balances about security are the, or that's some of what's held us back a little bit from sharing is just making sure that it's information that should be shared, you know, and so we're working on that governance there. But we can absolutely do that. And we do make a number of web maps available right now, like our, we've got a, an application that shows people the future land use and zoning. That's, that's an interactive map that they can interact with and then if they want to download the data, they can. But there aren't too many other layers that are available, but we do have other interactive maps like our traffic advisory map, you know, Drive Kent, where are, where are road closures? That's, it's a GIS application. It's shared out with the public. We, we tend to not let the stat, let the public download that data because it's irrelevant almost the next day, but if they put a request in, we can, we can provide that. So it is something that we want to expand on and, and move. The question about kind of police's usage of, of the system, I'd kind of defer to the police there.
Okay.
They, they have used a number of, they've used a number of applications in the past. Most of what police has done, they've developed on their own. The, there's some surveys that they've used GIS for where it was part of the DEI initiatives and I can't speak to it really well, but where, you know, officers were using GIS as they were interviewing the public under certain circumstances, they'd fill out their own survey based on the responses of the public, so the public.
Was that the data collection on where they're stopping individuals?
It was, yeah, it had to do with, with stops and, and I, there's some demographic information. I wasn't a part of it and that was completely developed by police. Right now, their, their new Axon system, so their kind of, their record management system has a bit of a GIS component and they're working on, you know, trying to integrate that with GIS a little bit. But I, I can't speak to their overall usage.
Yeah, I'm curious on how they're using it because it was, it would be kind of, I don't know if they have that available, looking at like a heat map of crimes of certain type of crimes.
I, I do know, so they, they do have a, an analyst that was, he's been with the city for a long time. He was, he's not a GIS analyst, but he has, he's their crime analyst and he's used GIS tools to develop crime heat maps on a monthly, quarterly basis. I'm assuming they just use them internally. I've never really seen them use, you know, shared externally.
I think that is all the questions I had. Councilmembers?
You're good.
You're good? Are you sure?
You took my questions.
Okay. Councilman Boyd, you're good? All right. Okay. No, this is very, this is exciting. Yeah. And I've played with Esri before, so I really love that platform. So, yeah, no, I appreciate you and thank you, thank your whole team on the amazing work they're doing, doing the heavy lifting for our city because data is very important for us and, and I'd be curious to see how, you know, all different departments are using GIS. I think that's something I'm very curious about, just like police, to see, you know, how we're using it and how it's helping us make decisions. And I know every department's using it, well, these departments are using it now. That's how they're coming up, but the, you know, decisions to put sidewalks or, you know, put up for our parks placements and everything, but just something maybe down the road, get an overview of how is they're using it, so.
Yeah, I purposely am trying not to speak for the individual departments on, you know, what they're doing individually and, and leave that to them. We definitely coordinate with them on things, but, you know, they're, each department has a number of initiatives that I'm not even aware of, you know, and, and they don't need to keep me aware of them as long as, you know, we're all kind of using the same data and not going off on our own entirely.
Madam President, I'm trying to think about maybe in that time, look at GIS, maybe you have each representative, maybe kind of give a little snippet on how to use it. Maybe someone will want to think about doing that sometime.
Yeah, I think that would be, that would be something.
I remember last year, Parks, Parks did a Parks.
Did have a Parks GIS.
Presentation on their own too.
If I may, Kelly Peterson, Deputy Public Works Director, November is GIS month. In the last two years, the GIS family, as Heath likes to call it, they do a, a presentation in here so people can come in and learn and, and grow with their GIS knowledge and understanding of how they can implement things within their own job. If it pleases the council, maybe November is a time that we can come, do another presentation where the different departments can explain to you some of the things that they do on a day-to-day basis and how they use GIS to be efficient and to help serve our community.
That'd be great.
Would be wonderful.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
And you were, and you are invited and we will, if you'd like, we'll send you, you know, we will invite you at the time to the GIS Day event. It happens here in council chambers. It's open to all of us, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll make sure. It's, it's a fun event.
All right. With that, I think, thank you so much, Heath, and we are adjourned until seven o'clock for council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
They're asking good questions. Sometimes people are just quiet, but there were some good questions asked them that evening, so that is part of our Kent Equity Inclusion Speaker Series, a series that is open to the public. It's a free series where a few times a year, speakers are brought in. So it's a great opportunity.